Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council Study Session. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings. Our rate meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll just go around the room and introduce ourselves. Does that work? Start with Joe.
Joe Simomo, Council.
Beth Porter, Council.
Christina Zoltes, Council.
Jennifer Harjehousen, Council.
John Smith, Council.
Jeff Wagner, Mayor.
Debbie Hartzog, Council.
Adam Easton, Police Chief.
Shavon Johnson, Finance.
Casey Parker, my instructor.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk.
Thank you, everybody. With that, we have one item for discussion, and that's business and occupation tax. And am I turning that over to Regan or Casey?
Casey.
Casey, it's all yours.
Thank you. First, I just want to make introductions, because you guys have never met Shavon before. Shavon is our senior accountant, and she's been with us for going on three years now.
Right, welcome.
She's thrilled to be here.
So here's you, Shelley, and Stacy, and Casey, but.
I'm in the corner, yeah, kind of between Shelley and Casey's office.
In the cubicle right at the end.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, so I have a PowerPoint for you, so let me get this. All right, so business and occupational taxes. Everybody's super excited.
Anything that deals with accounting, I'm excited.
And I get excited, because people don't like to talk numbers very often, and so I get pretty excited when I do get some numbers. Okay, so what is a business and occupation tax? So a B and O tax, for those who don't know or aren't familiar, is a tax on gross receipts. It's measured on the gross income of business activities. The revenues that come in from the B and O tax are unrestricted and can be used for any lawful governmental purpose. All business activity is reported under certain tax classifications, and each tax classification has its own rate. And on the next slide, I'll get to the rates and show you what those look like. Collection and enforcement are the responsibility of task taxing districts, so that would be 100% on us and the finance department in particular. And then also, we're required to adopt the state's model administrative and B and O tax ordinance. Makes it somewhat easier for you guys, because about 95% of that 44 pages worth of code, you can't touch. You just, if the state requires us to adopt it. So what, the rates that I was talking about, businesses that are subject to B and O tax, these are the categories that are in state law. There's manufacturing, retail, services, and other activities, and wholesaling. So those are the four categories. And those are the rates that council can also determine. And those are the ones also that we could have a different rate for each one, or we could make them standard across the board. And then the criteria for being subject to B and O is it's business that's conducted in Covington. So anybody that operates in Covington, anybody that does business in Covington, everybody that does would be subject to the B and O. And the part of the state ordinance is that annual grocery receipts threshold is greater than $20,000. So if you only make $19,000 per state law, you wouldn't be subject to B and O. Anything over $20,000, you would be subject to B and O if that was our threshold.
And that's revenue or income?
That is income.
But we can set that threshold.
Grocery seeds.
Grocery seeds. There are some deductions available, and I'll get to that also.
Can we, could we raise that to something more we wanted?
Yep, that's, that's the, I'll get to it when we get further in, but that's one of the things that the council can't control. It's the rates, the threshold, and then also any additional exemptions that you'd like to do. And then again, that's kind of what it says here down at the bottom. Well, these are the state requirements. Jurisdictions can do more than the state requires. So again, we can adjust that threshold, we can adjust those rates. And we're also proposing a higher threshold and some additional exemptions. So what businesses are exempt from B and O tax? Again, these are in the state law, so this is part of the model ordinance. Public utilities, so you're thinking Covington Water, Sues Creek Sewer, those are subject to utility taxes, so they wouldn't be subject to B and O. Some of these are odd, and I don't know exactly why that they are not subject, but that is, this is in state law. Investments, insurance businesses, employees, and when you, when you see employees, it's just determining, you're not an independent contractor, you're an employee. Your employee wouldn't be subject to B and O. Some certain amounts derive from the sale of real estate, mortgage brokers, third-party providers, service trust accounts. Anything that's derived from manufacturing, selling, or distributing motor vehicle fuel, so we already have a fuel tax. So then we wouldn't also tax them on B and O. Same for the liquor, we have the liquor excise tax and liquor profits. And then casual and isolated sales, I think your one-off sales, your garage sales, things like that. Accommodation sales, and taxes collected as trust funds. Again, these are what the state requires, and we can propose, propose additional exemptions if we choose. So these are just some of the surrounding jurisdictions. I just kind of picked the ones that were closest to us, and you can kind of see what their rates are for those four categories. And what their thresholds are. Looks like Kent is about, is the point one and point two, they have a $250,000 threshold. Auburn is kind of all over the board with their rates, they have a higher threshold, $500,000 threshold. North Bend is the point two across the board and $20,000 threshold, so they just kind of adopted that model ordinance.
Can I ask a question? I know Maple Valley's not in there, is that because they don't have a, you know, tax? Okay, thank you.
So there are 281 cities in the state of Washington, I believe. I'm not, I'm not on that slide, but 50 cities have a B and O tax out of those.
That's not all.
No, and I do have a handout. I think I had sent it to you guys at the summit, but I have another, or the budget workshop maybe, but I have the handout for you if I can, if I can hand that out. So Shavon did this wonderful analysis, which is one of the reasons she's here, just in case we want to play with anything else. But this is the number of businesses that are currently in the city that would be over the $20,000 threshold. And we just kind of did them thresholds to show you kind of how the businesses break out. So the total number of businesses, 483, and then you can see in each kind of chunk of money where those fall. So that's kind of helpful when we're wanting to look at potentially setting a threshold, adjusting it from the 20,000. Any questions? So I should, I should have started with this disclaimer. So sales tax information is confidential. And I can't disclose any of the information, we have to sign confidentiality clauses with Department of Revenue. So I can only show summary information like this. And especially even more so if it's less than three, then I, it makes it even more strict. Three businesses, so, yeah.
Just, just a question, when we're talking services, we're talking like your plumbers, electricians, and stuff like that, or sure, there's something else.
Oil changes, magifilubes, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about restaurants?
Restaurants would be in retailing.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
All medical is in services?
Would be in services. So, so let me tell you, I was going to get to this later on.
Dental, radiology.
All of those are in services, and we have pretty good estimates for those type of businesses, because they already pay, they're included in retailing. And we can see how much they bring in. The data that we get from the state, or that we got from the state when we did our big upload or download from them. It gets a little tricky with the hospitals, because they report statewide revenue. So if there's 100 multi-care clinics, and they're reporting 30 million, 30 billion, probably, honestly, dollars, I can't tell what's Covington. So what's included in the numbers that I'm going to show you is doctors, dentists, everybody that's located in Covington, I can get those. Some of them, like Proliance, has multiple facilities, those, those would be difficult. But the multi-cares, the U-Dubs, I can't, those would be above and beyond the numbers that are in here.
But you said you could see them in our current retail.
I can see, or go ahead.
I was just going to say, so they sent us a report where it sends out to all businesses, and they basically estimate what they think they're going to bring in for that year. And there was some discrepancies between what they thought they were going to bring in and what was actually brought in. Because the only thing that we have that are actual numbers is the retail numbers, so if there's other things besides the retail tax, then we don't have that information. We're just going based off of what they estimate their revenue to be for that year.
So when you're thinking retail sales, big prescriptions, if there's any, I don't know if there's tax on prescriptions or not, any devices, if they're selling splints and things like that, those things might be taxable. They have a retail portion that they always report to us, so those are solid numbers. It's just the services, the actual services they provide, those ones we can't tell.
The important thing to keep in mind, though, is when, when she gets the slide going over the numbers, it won't include multi-care hospital.
Or you don't. Only the retail portion.
Right, so there's going to be some amount above what we show you tonight that we'll collect, but we don't know that.
We don't. That's, that's about as solid as I can. What is city about?
Based on my bill.
So we don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
We've heard different things from different cities, and they favoritistically, it'll take two years before you actually know what those numbers look like. And because we would be starting mid-year, it might even take longer to have that information. Because it's getting the information out, getting people to pay, making sure that they're calculating it correctly. So to actually know what the revenue would be, probably be a couple of years, yeah.
The advice that we've gotten, sorry, the advice that we've gotten from the cities that we've talked to that have just implemented the Auburns and the Tuckellus. Is adopt the model ordinance and let it lie for a couple of years, because you don't know what you don't know. Like, we need to let it kind of shake out and see what type of businesses we have reporting. And what type, if we have any difficulty collecting, Auburn's already hired two additional auditors.
I think they have five. Yeah, but they have, they have, we have 483, they have like 6,500. So, and they have other categories that we don't, they're doing square foot tax, because they have a lot of warehouses. And so they have a lot of more to it than, than we do.
All right. Oh, sorry. So we're confident that the numbers reported to city, like same multi-care, not saying they do anything on a hand, but like, is any who's validating that the numbers that they give are accurate? So that maybe another city might be getting some proportion or vice versa.
So there is a, what they call an apportionment, proportionate, and they're supposed to be divvying that out appropriately between the cities that they're within. That's where the auditors come in, in some of these bigger cities that have those kind of staff, they are digging into those financials. And auditing to make sure that they're reporting appropriately.
And they can share that, we can, isn't there something where our jurisdictions can share that information between each other to a certain extent, right? So if they notice something, or we notice something, we can.
We have tax sharing agreements that we just implemented last year. It's only a handful of cities, there's maybe a dozen or so on there, I can't remember, but we're in there with them, with the bigger cities, so they can share with, they can share with Auburn, Tuckella, Seattle, Bellevue, Tacoma. So, so that'll be helpful. It was helpful with Auburn, so they could actually share their information and Tuckella. Okay, so this is just a couple of different scenarios where we're looking at the rates by category. And what we feel it'll bring in based on those. So the very first option, one, is just a B and O rate at the point 001 or point 1%. And so that's like half of the maximal, maximum amount, and we anticipate that would bring in about 563,000. Again, we have a little bit of wiggle room in there, because we don't want to know what those hospitals are going to bring in. Option two is just again, point 1.5, just a little bit more, 845,000, and the point two is 1.1. And I know we had started out with our estimate being about 1.5, I still think this is probably pretty conservative. And I also believe we'll probably get there, as long as our collections, as long as we have good collections from folks. But this is just more conservative, more conservative number.
How we got these numbers was we took what the business estimated, estimated that they were going to pay, and then we took the retail portion of what was actually paid for last year. And we took the actuals, and then the ones that were not listed on there, because they don't pay retail, we took their estimates. So they could have estimated high, they could have estimated low. So there are a lot of variables that we don't know, we kind of just have to go off of what they showed. But there was a lot of retail ones that were pretty much on, on the dollar as far as what they thought they were going to get. So I think that a lot of people are pretty accurate in what they report. Except for, I would say, some of those medical ones, because that's kind of, you never know how many you're going to see.
Debbie?
Yes, so when I read through this earlier, one of my first questions was why we are going, or your proposal is going to be to stay with the same rate. Whether it's manufacturer, retail, where a lot of other cities have that varied, and I don't know what drives that variation, if it's that some have a higher profit margin, and some are more susceptible to having higher wage rates.
It could also be the type of, so if a city of Auburn has a big wholesaling sector. They were also looking at certain dollar amounts they were trying to get to, so they were also playing with those rates to get to what they needed. And there's also some special interest kind of stuff, you know, you look at some of the exemptions that, that folks are doing, and it's racetracks and casinos and box thing. And, you know, so they kind of tailor it to, to what's in their city and who their big, not vendors, but who their big, you know, businesses are. Also keeping folks happy, you know, keeping the businesses there too, so.
Okay, so your, your feeling is going just with a flat rate across the board to start?
That's kind of what was recommended to us from both Auburn and Tuckella, that it's for smaller staff, it's easier to administer for one, because if it's the same across the board, you don't really care if they miss report. They're just reporting, and we're happy.
You mean as far as their class?
Yes, yes, so, and then they also said that, you can go back and adjust it, you know, anytime you want to. We were bringing in way more than we needed, but we could also adjust it if we wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway. So those are just kind of, just some different options.
And just remind me, again, if we did go with a lower rate this time, we can still go up to the point 002 at any time, like not additional, but just maximum.
I believe that anytime you make a change in a rate, it may reopen the referendum process, I know Mark is on, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we change anything.
Mark's got his hand raised.
Yes, thank you very much. So when it's, whenever there's an initial imposition of a B and O tax, or any subsequent increase in the tax rate. It'll likely include a referendum, it needs to include a referendum procedure, so that allows people to petition and potentially get something on the ballot in order to say they don't want the B and O tax to apply. So if we started at a lower number and then tried to increase it, the city would, it would be subject to referendum every single time. If we started at a flat number and decreased it, then it wouldn't be subject to any kind of referendum, because we're not increasing the tax burden.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we kind of did some calculations to show you what happens as we raise the threshold. And how many businesses drop off and how much revenue is lost? So when we start out at the 20,000, which is the very, the very first one, we have 400, oh, sorry. You have 483 businesses, and that's the 1.1 million, that's at the point two. If we increase the threshold to 50,000, so that's businesses over 50,000 would report. We drop down to 379 businesses, so you drop 100 businesses off, and we're at 1.1, just.
You only lose seven.
Seven thousand dollars. And that's 100 returns, I don't have to.
And a lot less staff time.
After this, I went through and I added 100,000 and 125,000, and if we went from 20 to 150, we drop off 261 businesses. It's like 54%, and it's only a loss of $33,000, 33, 791. So it's not a huge difference in revenue, but it would help some of the smaller businesses not be subject to this, yeah.
And it'd pay for itself and stop time really quickly.
Yeah.
Why didn't we go up to like 250, 500, like some of the other cities? What, what does that data look like?
I can do that calculation real quick, but I think it was mainly because of the amount that we were trying to get to. If we went any further, it was just going to continue to go down, but I can, I can do that real quick.
Our target that we've been talking about since we did our public safety committee has been 1.5. And so these are all below that target, but we think it might be a little closer with the, yeah.
But it's a big difference, I mean, that's a lot of businesses that would not have to be subject to it. And kind of a nicer way to spin it, you know, with the small businesses in town, and while she's working on that, I'll just, any other questions on the calculations? So again, like I mentioned, what our proposal would be, would be to do the point 2% across the board, across all categories. We estimate it'll generate 1.1 million in additional revenue annually. The impacts to individual businesses would vary by reported gross receipts, and also what threshold we chose. I had just picked 75,000, I'd be thrilled with 150, there's, there's barely any difference, but I just kind of tried to pick something in the middle. Someone that had $100,000 worth of annual gross receipts would see $200, $200 additional taxes that they would submit to the city annually. And then the other thing that I was talking about is where we can propose additional exemptions. And I was going to propose city activities, so the city currently pays B and O tax to the state, so we would also be subject to B and O to ourselves. And the kinds of activities that we pay B and O on are our swim drainage utility fees that we collect. Our athletics registration, aquatics registration, recreation registration, room rentals, general admission, ticket sales, those type of things. So monthly, we pay the state B and O, so we would be subject to those same, same things, if we could be paying ourselves, or we could exempt ourselves. So that would be one proposed exemption. And it's, that's not included in our scenarios, but it's, it would, it would be minimal. And then the proposed effective date would be July 1st, and that would give us still a couple of months to roll it out to the businesses, do a lot of noticing. We were thinking of doing like some postcards with QR code, and we'll have a B and O tax website set up. So they can see our forms and frequently ask questions and things of that nature. So, so really what you have before you is the model ordinance and the model administrative provisions. Like I said, those are required to be adopted by the state, so there's not a lot of, not a lot of wiggle room for, for amending those. We can, the things that we can really mess around with are the rates, the threshold, and any additional exemptions that we want.
And this might be from Mark too, or you can even respond. If we ended up creating, adding some different exemptions. And then wanting to remove them, so that we would expand the types of businesses down the road. Is that something also subject to referendum, like anytime we want to collect more, regardless of whether it's, so it's receipts, rate? And if we change any exemptions that.
I think it's just rate, but Martin, are you still there?
Yes, I believe it's just rate, but I'll look into that while during this presentation, I'll let you know what I can find out.
I think it's just rate.
Yes, and so in other areas for exemption, what about nonprofits?
So of the 50 cities that are doing a B and O, about 10 of them have additional exemptions. Most of them adopt the model ordinance, but the ones that do have additional exemptions, generally the nonprofits that you see. But I would say most of them are, they may exempt the nonprofits except for retail sales. They still make them pay the B and O on retail sales. And there's also additional language that some folks have, like City of Tacoma exempts nonprofits except for hospitals. So they do make their hospitals pay, but there's a threshold, anything over 30 million, they pay, so they must, they've got a lot of hospitals up there, so.
Okay, thank you, and then what about, so if we wanted to look at healthcare in general, so the doctor's offices and dental offices. We did hear from a dentist that spoke at the open house, and he made a very good point, and that is that Medicare has not increased their reimbursement rates for many years. And, you know, we've seen what that's done to multi-care, because we get their quarterly report. It could, this could have an impact on smaller, some of the smaller dental offices and maybe even doctor's offices. Do you have data that we would be able to look at to say if we were to exempt healthcare practice, healthcare segment? What would that strip off from our expected tax collection?
But most of the healthcare isn't in these numbers you have here now, unless they're retail.
Yeah, we'll see that.
The dentist offices and that is included.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
It's just the larger healthcare.
It's including this, it's, it's the multi-care and, and U-Dub hospital.
It's anybody that has multi.
Okay.
Because we just get the statewide numbers.
So, so multi-care is a statewide healthcare system, and they only report their entire earnings to the state, not by jurisdiction. So we don't have those numbers and won't know them until we actually start collecting.
Right, but I guess the dentist that are included is medical.
Oh, yes.
If they're in that category.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Where it's a practice, you have dental practice, medical practice. Yeah, those are in here, but it would be nice if we knew if we were to exclude them or exempt them, what would?
What that would be with the services.
And is that discriminatory? I guess that's.
Or can we exempt them that like maybe like 500,000 have a threshold of different, or different markets?
Yes, but no, we can't ask maybe the popular thing, how is that different from different businesses who are trying to make a profit? And I mean, with respect, yes, of course, it's medical, sure, but it is a for-profit. Why would we want to favor that?
Mark?
Just briefly, when we're talking about the exemptions, while council has the authority to exempt a variety of certain businesses, it must be uniform across an individual class. So whatever the classes, you can't have some businesses at a threshold of 500,000 and some at a lower threshold. Likewise, the rate of tax must be the same for the entire, entire single business class, like Casey was pointing out, with the retail, manufacturing, and otherwise. But we, we can't set it at different, different rates constitutionally due to four different businesses within the same individual class.
To answer Christina's question, the point that that gentleman made, that doctor made, is that for retail or other businesses, they can raise their prices to their customers. But that, but they're locked in, right, so they can't, so it's coming directly out of their.
But they get shoplifters and that to that.
I think only to their Medicaid patients.
Correct, I wouldn't say.
Everyone else, like, collects, yeah. Because federally mandated Medicaid, they're saying this is what we're going to pay, and that's like.
All right.
Yeah, I do.
And I will say, one of the reasons Valley and Multi Care want a strong market share in Covington is because we have such a strong, I think we're like a 90 to 95% insured rate. So it's really high here. Multi Care Covington helps pay for Multi Care Auburn because of our insured rate here.
Yeah, because of the private insurance versus Medicare and Medicaid. Yeah, because of the private insurance versus Medicare and Medicaid, like Valley Medical and Renton. The, doesn't make, that's why, like you said, for Auburn, they're paying, Valley's paying for Renton.
Danny, I, as soon as she gets done with this, I'll, I'll look to see.
Thank you.
So on that, did I understand correctly that we, if we pick a sector, say medical. We have to set the same threshold and the same rate for everyone.
Yep.
Correct.
Even though one, yeah, one company makes thirty billion and the other guy makes five hundred thousand.
Well, you can set the threshold.
Right, but that's what, but then five hundred and one thousand, you're gonna pay.
So, interesting. Well, so if we set the threshold at five hundred and they make thirty billion, are they paying? B and O tax on the thirty million minus five hundred thousand, or they're paying the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay.
It just means they have to start reporting if they hit that five hundred.
Okay.
Missing something, but I'm like, that, the hospital, like Multi Care or whatever, have it in your jurisdiction. There's thirty billion, why wouldn't you issue a B and O tax on? Why, if that pot of money is there and other cities are collecting on it, why wouldn't you do it? I don't, you know, what's the argument against it other than, I'll say, we don't want to pay it, but.
Actually, our hospitals have said they're supportive of this. Um, so, but I think to Beth and Debbie's point is that one dentist mentioned, well, I can't increase rates on my Medicare patients, so. That just hits into my.
Do we have any medical establishments that primarily rely on Medicare? And I'm thinking like Valley Cities, those types of businesses do primarily health point. That's primarily Medicare dollars, I am not aware of necessarily any that would be impacted substantially.
Yes, but it's still, but still, they will, most of their patients pay with Medicare.
They do.
That's what I'm saying, is.
I don't know.
But I don't know that there's an.
Yeah, it's located here. Yeah.
Hey, Mark. Can you leave him up on there, on the side, there you go, thank you. Uh, question, Mark. On this annual gross receipts, and maybe Casey, you know it. So if we set it that it's on annual gross receipts, can you say annual gross receipts minus Medicare? Or does it have to be all gross receipts?
Go ahead, Casey.
Oh, I was gonna say, there are allowable deductions, whether or not Medicare is one of them, I would assume not, probably, but they. They do have some allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Shabon did get the numbers for the two hundred and fifty thousand. See it, oh, it's not responding. While we're waiting for that to pop back up, let me go to the next one.
Okay, here we go. Um, if we went to two hundred and fifty thousand, um, it would reduce it by about. Just under fifty uh one thousand.
So it'd be nine hundred something collections?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
So, if we did the point zero zero two, it would go from one point one two seven to one million seventy-six. So it's a difference of about fifty-one thousand.
It was ten ninety-three.
Twenty thousand down to the two fifty thousand.
And it would drop an additional forty-five businesses, so. I can't see that far.
That number again, it's a million seventy, a million seventy-six, three forty-eight, ninety-one.
And how many businesses would that be at two hundred and fifty thousand?
Reduce it from four hundred and eighty-three businesses. Uh, go down to, no, that's what. So forty-three minus three hundred and six, seventy.
One seventy-seven.
Oh, then you don't need to hire.
The value of a employee, the cost of an employee to manage that difference. I mean, any employee we put on the books is gonna be at least a hundred and twenty grand to city benefits, so. And we probably still have to have one person on there, but I don't.
That's what we're proposing, I'll, I'll just um go over these last few slides, then I can get to that, but. Just some of the benefits that I wrote down of a B and O, I didn't, there's pros and cons to everything, but this would be a reoccurring revenue that would diversify our. Our current revenue sources that we have, um, again, they're unrestricted. It will help close that revenue and expenditure gap we have due to our rising public safety costs. Uh, several major cities surrounding us have already implemented one. The cities, uh, we are allowed to establish the rates, exemptions, the threshold amounts. So that we're maintaining, you know, significant influence over the impacts of the tax. And again, the new revenue source diversified our revenues and will assist with maintaining our current strong volume rating as well. So if we choose to move forward, some of the required next steps that we have would be. Again, adopting the model administrative and B and O tax ordinance. We would need to establish the rates by category and the minimum threshold and then discuss if, if there is any additional exemptions that we want to do. We would need to provide the notice to businesses, um, I'll work with Carla, creating a website and get some mailings out, things of that nature. And then we would also need to approve an additional Springbrook tax model, and Springbrook is our financial software that we have. It would be about a forty thousand dollar um capital outlay, sixty-eight hundred dollars of it would be ongoing for the maintenance. And thirty-three thousand of it would just be the one-time purchase of the module. And then like Beth was, was saying, approve of one new F T positioning finance to help administer it and, and to audit the collections. And then we'd also need, we're also working on implementing um an online payment process and. Along with the tax module, and we're working with our current, current um permit track spender, the one that does our um online permits. And they feel they can make us a, a portal that they already have it built for submitting online permit payments. And they feel they can make one for us as well, um, for free. So, that's great, because most cities were using File Local and it was expensive, very sixty thousand, like, I mean, it was Auburn was.
I mean, the total was seventy thousand. Something going.
It was a lot.
And they can't um. Make it specific to your city, so like there are still workarounds that you'd have to do even with that system.
So, kind of just started that process, just, just to see if it's something that's possible, but it looks like it might work with permit tracks, which will. Save us a, a nice chunk of change every year, so. So those are kind of the next steps, and um, we can also look to see, can we look to see if you were able to tell healthcare? So there's a. Okay, so there would be a lot of different things um included in the healthcare. They call it a mid-code, it's just like a.
I think it would be a pretty large sum of.
It would be. It would cut out. It would cut out probably, I can run it just by the six.
So if you were to exempt nonprofits such as your. Storehouse and some of these other ones, how do you do that so that? It doesn't accept like the multi cares and.
Um, uh, Mark, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I've seen several cities that have exempted five oh one C threes except for. Except.
So like five oh one.
Write some language in there, um. Yeah.
Okay.
Our hospitals five oh one, isn't there a different like nonprofit?
I, I think there's like a five oh one C three, seven, and like. Yeah, and they fall into that, although U Dub, I was surprised, is both private and public. So, um, they would pay a hundred percent on their private portion of their, or private, yeah. And the public portion that would be nonprofit, then, well, if we don't exempt them, they would, they don't everything, but.
So as Lake Point gets developed and we set a rate, certain rate and uh. Tax percentage, do those businesses that meet that automatically come in, or do we have to go out? So they're five hundred thousand and more retail, they.
Any new business that comes in.
And then any business that grows and. Sorry, I wanted to mention online payment, uh, a lot of places now are charging a fee for that, we, we have to pay a fee to do that.
So we are currently not charging a credit card. Um, and it used to be that, well, mostly it was permit tracks is where most of our online um. Payments are made, and his software was not able to do the online. Fee like we needed it to be done, it had to be two separate merchant accounts, too much accounting stuff, but he couldn't do it, his new software can.
So we were paying that.
So we are currently paying the fee, the credit card fees, uh, it's generally anywhere between two and three percent.
Yeah, it, it adds up.
It does add up, uh, so if we did make that change, it would probably be something we would discuss, it would be citywide.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I would say we'd want to look at that.
Yeah, because it, yeah, it's definitely on our radar, we actually just talked about it today, so.
So if we took out all of the medical, um, it, not including like. The hospitals and stuff, because they're not calculated, and this would be just under thirty-nine million dollars that could be taken out.
What would that be times? Wait, thirty?
Seventy bucks.
Wait, did you see?
Seven hundred bucks.
Thirty-nine million.
Thirty-nine million.
And gross receipts.
Yeah, oh, and gross receipts, okay, so the impact to us would be. Two percent of that.
In addition. That, yeah, and that doesn't include the hospital.
Okay, so we would, we would get seventy K less if we exempt healthcare.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Whatever else, potential that we don't know of.
It would, it would be a lot more than that, because the hospitals alone bring in majority of the revenue that's not accounted for. And so if we exempted them, we'd have to exempt everybody, which would probably.
Thank you.
Is that everything in your presentation?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you have other questions?
So, thank you for this, it's very helpful, and I saw the different rates that you can set. Uh, the amounts, gross revenue, can you go higher than that, can you go to a million, or is five hundred thousand?
For the.
We didn't do five hundred.
The threshold?
No, no, I'm saying on the threshold, yeah.
We, we can keep going as high, as high as you want.
Wanted to get to that level to say, you set the threshold high enough. Uh, you know, whatever it is, five hundred or five million, you're gonna probably kick out most of the doctors. But you're gonna still get the hospital.
I would, I would guess they're bringing in over a million in grocery seeds.
What's that?
I would guess they're bringing in over a million.
Five million or ten million, so that, yeah, you have to make more grocery seeds than bill. Most of your little model pop doctors aren't gonna be pulling in ten million, so that'd be one way to, if you were concerned about that, so.
But if you do medical at that high amount, you'd be putting. Mark, can you just single out medical at that high amount? Or does it have to be by services? No, that's correct. Medical falls under services.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, what do you need from us tonight?
Direction, if you're ready to give it.
So does counsel?
Do you want me to come back with any, any additional information?
So, just that we did decide to go with a, a two hundred and fifty thousand threshold. That more than halves the number of businesses that we would need to audit. Does it make, would it make sense to hire a half player, or maybe they do something else to say to, right? People, or maybe it isn't, but we save half the salary.
Yeah, no, that's, that's completely possible, uh, we, we don't have a super good feel for how this is gonna go, um. From what we've talked, like talked from Tuckwill and Auburn, of course, they're way bigger than us, but they've kind of. Said, you guys are gonna need more than you think you're gonna need for time. And uh, I know some of them are also struggling with collections, so if we have somebody that could. Yeah.
Yeah, the city of Auburn has since hired four additional people than what they had originally thought. Because a lot of businesses aren't paying for, they're paying the wrong amounts, because. Um, even if they don't qualify for like it, the first or second quarter, even till third quarter, they still have to file at zero. Because if they don't, and we don't put it in the system, it's gonna charge them interest and penalties automatically, because that's a requirement. So it would just assume that they just didn't file like they're supposed to, so there's still the input of having to do that. And making sure that they're submitting that, so they wouldn't, depending on how we set it up, they wouldn't actually start paying it until they've hit that threshold. Unless we set it up, some cities have done, let's say their threshold is twenty thousand, they're saying if you hit five thousand within that first quarter, you start paying. And then if you don't hit the twenty thousand, then it's kind of credited next year. Yeah, it's kind of a big process, so the higher the threshold, the better it is, and most of them um will just pay. You know, quarterly, and then at year end, kind of true up when they know what their actuals are. So if they overpay for quarters one through three, or quarter four, they would reduce it by whatever that, that difference is.
Joe.
I, I just have a, a question, this is probably more on, on the basis of uh minutia. But when we're talking about sending the bills to these businesses, we're talking about, um, you know. R C, uh, the R C store over there, we send it directly to them, do we send the bill to Wal, from Walmart to uh Arkansas? Or do we send it to the Covington Walmart? It's.
So we'll get a download from the um state's business license system, and wherever they file their um. Information with the state is where we would send the notice.
And they, it would be on them to file returns, so they would have to go to our website and print off the form and either do it online. It's not something like we would have to send out to them quarterly, it's something that they just have to initiate on their own.
Just like with the state.
Yeah.
So what you're looking for tonight is a potential threshold, potential tax rate. And potential exemptions, those are the three that you need tonight to bring back to us at a future council meeting. But at that council meeting, you can also make adjustments as we think about it. Okay, so we've had, we've got these different. Thresholds, right now they're showing a hundred and fifty, but uh Siobhan brought up two hundred and fifty, would bring it down to a hundred and seventy-three businesses. And bring it down to.
Um, so it's a hundred and seventy-seven businesses and it would reduce it. See, by uh fifty thousand, nine fifty-one.
So bring it down to one million forty thousand.
Uh, it's one million seventy-six thousand.
Oh, one million seventy-six thousand, okay, oh, you're going off the total.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, it's taking away from the initial.
So, does council have a suggestion of a threshold they'd like to bring back?
Yes.
Sean.
I, I do like the two fifty, uh, the point zero zero two. Uniform, what was the figure?
The types of exemptions, the like.
Yeah.
My, I'm thinking nonprofits such as like Valley Cities and uh Storehouse and. That type of nonprofit. That provides the.
Five oh one C threes.
But, but there's five oh one C threes that are also. That claim nonprofits, because I think part of the medical is.
If we didn't want to get into that business of, of exempting nonprofit, the threshold should keep most of those nonprofits out of it. And capture the ones that we want to capture.
Because we can always, if we find out that we're exempting, or we're not exempting a certain nonprofit, we can always re. Put that classification in there, and it doesn't go back out for referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so is council good with a two hundred and fifty thousand at a point two percent to just bring back to us?
Is it possible that, I just, I really, really, really have a hard time if, if somebody like a storehouse or buying multiple places is gonna have to pay B and O tax. Well. But.
I have, our house could be close at, at two fifty.
I don't know if there's a way to.
That's why we bring back that type of nonprofit to be included as an exemption.
But I thought you said, oh.
We can in the future.
Yeah. Is council good with that to bring that back at a future council meeting for further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so two hundred and fifty thousand at the point zero zero two. With a list of, that we can do, um, potential nonprofits.
And I suggest, just if, if we are cutting close and it doesn't, that would be the difference, can we get a three hundred and fifty?
I would, I would like to see three fifty and five hundred. Because the, for the other cities on here are that high. I would like to.
Yeah.
See what our numbers look like then.
Good, that's good, okay, anything else you need from us tonight?
Appreciate your time.
All right, no, thank you, thanks for bringing it.
Clarity purposes, we'll, we'll bring it back, um, threshold of five hundred and. We'll get those two new thresholds.
Yes.
And then no exemptions. City, yeah.
Oh, city, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great, very cool. You'll bring it back at staff's reprimandation time.
What was the main ones that are located in city of Covington, or yeah, city of Covington?
The nonprofits, storehouse.
Because we can go see what they have put on, um, as what they.
Yeah.
At averages to see if they would even fall into that ever, just based off of kind of how they've reported and.
Would find make, would, um, like Valley Cities and Kent Youth and Family Services, because they do businesses in here. In the city. Or do they have to be based in the city?
If they did business here, but it would have to be exceeding that amount in business here.
So if Kent Youth and Family Services did, or let's say we set a five hundred thousand, I'm not saying they're doing that. But if Kent Youth and Family Services did over five hundred thousand within the city of Covington, they'd have paid B and O tax.
Yes.
Just on that, not on their whole.
Right, just on the portion that they do in Covington, okay.
Yeah, we want to keep it high enough where we're not discouraging these smaller nonprofit groups that are very reliant on Medicaid dollars. From coming and providing services.
Yeah.
At, kind of ad hoc to us because we, that's all we got and we're gonna scare them away if. It's, it's low enough that causes them to do additional reporting and tax pay, they don't have the staff to support stuff like this.
And I'll clarify with Mark, what type of language I can and can't.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Perfect, all right, cool, thank you all very much. The special meeting is adjourned.